October 3rd, will you please join me for a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, seems like in the light of recent events, it seems like that pledge means a little bit more today than usual. We had a closed session meeting beforehand where we did performance evaluations for the city administrator and city attorney, and those were concluded.
Yes.
Okay. We have an agenda. Does anybody want to make any changes to the agenda? Anybody at all? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
I move approval, agenda.
Second.
Moved by Councilperson Herman, second by Vice Mayor Follendorf to approve the agenda as presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Passes five oh. Staff updates. This is informational item only. No action will be taken, but we have a consolidated staff report. This is included in your packet. Are there any questions or comments?
Yeah, I have a question for Myers. I think it's yours. What is going on with the high school and the grading and the Pope Lones and all of that bunch of stuff?
Well, that's where they plan on putting their ag studies is on that lot. And so they graded a level pad for some pole barns, some structures out there, and they graded over in the easement that we have with the water line in it. And where we're still trying to find the water line, we're not sure where it is in the fill or buried under the fill.
Yeah.
But we think it's about four feet deep and there's about another six to seven feet of dirt on top of it, which puts it beyond our range to maintain. If we have a break in there, which their equipment may cause a break. And we also have to figure out if we make them pull the dirt off, whether they'll cause a break again there. So right now, we're kind of up in the air and we got to figure a few things. We do have some impact fee money for replacing that water line. But whether we want to do it ahead of the game and let the high school have free rein on that property or do we want them to pull the dirt off the water line? That would be more of a political issue is why I was trying to get more information. I'll bring it back to the council for a decision. Right now, we're just holding right now.
Dave, while you're up there, any news on the Raspberry staircase that's not in the staff report? And it should be like bullet item number one with updates.
We took an agreement, we had the agreement reviewed by the council and it's been approved. And I'll be bringing that back to the next meeting.
Okay, so when will it, when will construction begin, assuming that all goes well after next meeting?
If all goes well, well, it depends what well is. If the contracts-
No more delays.
If the contracts, if the contracts approve, it'll be dependent on the fabricator and how fast they can move. I've talked to him out on the grading, he's the one that did the grading out on the high school property. And he's got an idea of how to do it, and he wants to fabricate in the shop and put it on site with a crane, lift it up there. I would still say that's a couple of months if it's fast. But we'll see.
Okay.
And just so you're aware, and no fault of staffs at all, there will be a budget amendment coming with this when it comes back because they took an RFP out and did not receive any, only one.
The original-
Two. The original bidder was the only one that rebid. And his amount is a little bit more than it was before, what is budgeted. So we will bring a budget amendment and an option of wooden or metal stairs. Anyway, we will bring it back, but just so you are aware that it is going to be coming with the budget amendment through no fault of staffs at all.
It's got to be somebody's fault. It's been about two-year delay since we approved this the first time. And we've been asking for it and we've done nothing to slow it down on the council's side. And it didn't get done, so. And now we're going to be paying more for it because of the delays. So that's not, that's not a good thing. Thank you, Dave.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions or comments?
We had something for Susan, I think. Says you did updates to the website. What were the updates?
Fixed, I'm sorry. I've worked with GetSmart Group to fix the calendar that wasn't viewing correctly. And to reorder the agendas and minutes that get put on. If they don't get put on in the correct order, there was, before, there was no way to put them in the correct order. And they have resolved that. I made changes to the events calendar for the museum and added some of their events that are happening. And updated the minutes and the agendas for the city council and the planning commission.
And we were going to put the Main Street plan in there?
It is in there now.
I can't find it.
It's on the news page.
Which?
News.
New, okay. And what about a city's disaster plan? Do we have one? Is it in there?
I do not have one. I've been in contact with Steve Flag. And he said that they are working on updating the disaster plan. The one that they have is from, I can't remember, it might have been 2012.
Well, I saw something in, from buildings that there was a tabletop exercise regarding floods. So that must have been a component of some disaster plan, right?
Correct. The city's got a grant from the Department of Water Resources to add a flood component to the disaster plan, hold the tabletop exercise and train some of the city employees in the disaster management system, NIMS. So we have a grant to do some of this work, and so we are working on that one.
Okay, so, and the disaster plan is under redesign, and when it's done, that's a website posting too?
It can be, yes.
Okay, that's all I had, it's good.
Anybody else? Anybody in the audience? Anybody? Okay. Okay, we'll move on to council updates. Councilperson Herman.
Let's see, I've attended, I've attended ACBA today, which was, you know, working on the Mark Twain Wild West Fest. And it looks like it's come along really well. Everything is very organized. I remember last year, too, I was part of it, pouring wine and everything, you know, seemed to go really well. So anyway, very organized and I think it's doing a good job. And I went to Central Sierra Economic Development District at the board meeting. And there it was just, it was just interesting for me. Where I was interested in the workforce and economic development, you know, and how to put things together for many counties. It's pretty much what that was. And I had never been to that meeting. I just kind of happened to be needed to go to it. And so I'm not usually on that committee. But I found it very interesting. The Motherlode Job Training is getting very involved in that and I think taking some leadership. And I know that's a very good organization. I've seen like they've done a lot of good in the counties, so. That, and then also I had called Cal Waste to find out if they were going to be able to dump the garbage because we were having trouble who dumps the garbage downtown before the Wild West Fest. And so when I was talking to the gal, they're going to do it on the 20th, just before, so that's really good. But we've had some complaints about the garbage cans being just kind of old and dumpy. And when I was talking to the gal at Cal Waste, she said that the Cal Waste was going to pay half the cost of new garbage cans in Murphy's and that they would be, love to come and talk to us about seeing if we wanted to split something. We only have five cans downtown. It would be much cheaper for us. And so anyway, it's something to look into. They do pay half cost and so it could be pretty minimal cost for us if we want to improve the look downtown.
Okay, thank you. Councilwoman Olivera.
I'd like to thank Linda for attending the economic development as an alternate. That was mine and I was out of town. Appreciate that. I spent, I guess, the last half hour of the Coffee Tuesday today with that group. And that was my first exposure to that, and I thank you for that. That was interesting and appreciated.
Councilperson McCulley.
I went to the McQuintock Town Hall meeting. And it went relatively well. I think that our police force did a good job in regards to making sure that people behaved. There were a few people that, you know, did a small protest and luckily they were calm and left. And I think the crowd was good in regards to asking questions. You could definitely tell both sides were represented and, yeah, some people found it informative, others didn't. I'm glad to see the Mark Twain Medical Center is moving along, you know, and the Caltrans, et cetera. That's nice. We were hoping to get that going. I did notice the work starting over for Dollar General. That's great. Love seeing that. And I did attend the Utica Water and Power Authority Board Meeting. My very first attending that as a replacement for someone who couldn't make it. And Angels is in remat, which basically means that our PG&E rates will be better. So yay, good news, because I don't know how everyone else felt, but my PG&E rates were crazy over the summer. And they're looking into getting, let's see, what is it? This Hydrogen Company putting in a new, some meter that costs $600,000 to $700,000 that wants to, you know, that's possibly, you know, pushing the cost out there on their own and then, you know, slowly collecting back possible. So, anyway, it's interesting. And also rumor has it that the Utica Hotel is still going along. I park in that back parking lot every day at work and so today they were working again. Someday that will, the bar will be open and we'll all be saying hallelujah and have a drink.
Vice Mayor Follendorf?
I mostly had just comments looking forward to the next couple of meetings coming up. One, tomorrow is a CAG meeting, but our CIP reports are not updated. And I would like to know by tomorrow's meeting what is the holdup on that, our CIP reports? Yeah. And then just give me a heads up before tomorrow's meeting, please. And then, because we need to keep that updated with the end of the year. And then also, just having staff think about this for possible agenda item in the future as well. Projects that we can all talk about as a council and get our priorities straight with some of these funding from CAG. Coming up the next, we got project work of plan and some other things coming up. And I think it would be best that with a new council, we have maybe a kind of workshop to see where our priorities are, how to best use these funding, so we can give Dave a better idea of what to project for our projects with the county. And I don't know if that's something that both him and Dave Myers can work together, you know, kind of see what your priorities are, what our priorities are, and come up with something that's going to help you guys put your project through with CAG, because that's going to be coming up. And I know Amber, we had had multiple discussions about that. So maybe we can follow up on that and talk about it. And also, the light downtown I've been noticing have been going out. So I didn't know if there was an electrical issue, if the bulbs are out. But it's primarily around the visitor center and just from a safety standpoint, is not a lot of visuals right now. And I didn't know if there was something going on. But, that's it.
Okay. And I attended the farmer, the final farmer's market of the year. Had a nice time out there, listening to good music with good friends. And then also on Thursday night, I think it's, yes, this coming Thursday, at the fireside room at Camps or Greenhorn Creek, there's going to be a community outreach presentation for the Mark Twain Health Center, where we, you know, past, present, future, what to expect with the health center. So again, that's six o'clock at the fire, the firehouse, or not firehouse, the fireside room. Okay. Now it's time for the public comment portion of the meeting. And this is reserved for persons wishing to address the council on anything that's not on the agenda. And we can't act upon anything unless they, it is on the agenda. So if you have anything you'd like to bring our attention to, please stand up and take the podium. Any public comment? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to the consent agenda. And the consent agenda, our items are expected to be routine. They'll be acted upon by the council at one time without discussion. Any council member, staff member, or interested person may request that any consent items be removed for discussion. Tonight, we have three items. The first is the approval of the regular meeting minutes on September 19th. Also adoption, adoption of resolution 17-34 approving miscellaneous non-exempt MOU. And finally is the adopt resolution 1735 approving amended agreement with Calver's Business Bureau and amending the annual budget for 2017 and 18 fiscal year for the visitors bureau and community support for Mark Twain Wild West event. Is there anybody that would like to remove any one of these items for discussion?
I'd like to move B for clarification on a couple of things.
Okay, item B. Any others? Okay, I'd like to move item C for discussion as well. If there's none else, then we will, I'll entertain a motion to approve item A of the consent agenda, which is the meetings from September 19th.
Motion approved.
Second.
Moved by Councilwoman Olivera, second by Vice Mayor Follendorf. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Pass, section, item A passes five oh. Okay, item B is adopt resolution 17-34 approving the miscellaneous non-exempt memorandum of understanding. Bill, you have some questions?
Yeah. On page one of five of proposal number two, question for staff. Item three there, the last sentence in six dot one dot three says that this was based on the compensation study and adjusted by previous coal is agreed upon in a previous agreement. So my question is, does that mean that this unit recognizes that study?
Yes.
They do?
Yes, they do.
All right. And then in page two of five, section 14, 14 dot eight dot two, there's two references there to PEMCHA, MEC. I don't remember what those acronyms were, but I don't think that's important. My question was employer subsidy of 50%, the Calper's select premium for employee only minus, key word being minus, the PEMCHA, MEC amount referenced in 14-1. When I look at 14-1, that looks like just some kind of a CPI adjustment that they do annually. So does this suggest that we won't recognize that CPI because it's minus that item?
Essentially, the amount that we pay for employee health is in two different pieces. The city has adopted PEMCA, which is a law that says that we have to pay a certain amount every year for the employees. And we pay that directly to PERS for retirees. Currently, it's $128, I think, $128. The remaining part of the 50% is what's considered to be a health saving, no, health reimbursement account. No, health savings account. I'm sorry, it's an HSA. Whereby, we're paying for the rest of that 50% and it's tax deductible because it's an HSA to the employee. So essentially, we're paying 50%, but we're paying the PEMCA over to PERS. And the other piece is going direct to the retirees to help them pay for the retiree benefits. But it's tax deductible because it's running through an H, H? HRA, HRA, sorry.
Still, it's still a little fuzzy for me.
Okay.
When I go to 14-1 dot two, it looks like it says in the second paragraph, each year PERS PEMCA, MEC shall be adjusted by the PERS board to reflect any change in the medical care component, but, you know, reference to CPI rounded up to nearest dollar. City will pay the required adjusted amount. That sounds to me like an adjustment on the back end on an annual basis.
From them. They changed that $128 amount every year by a CPI.
Okay.
And our 50% is exactly that, 50% of the premium. That's what we're supporting. As they change the PEMCA portion by the CPI, it also changes what we would then reimburse to the retiree.
What's the reference to minus mean then, exactly?
Well, it's 50%. What we're saying is we're going to put into the HRA, the 50% minus the PEMCA. And it's that amount that we're subsidizing directly to the retiree. Between the two pieces, we got that piece going directly to the retiree. We got the other piece going directly to PERS. The two of them together make the 50%.
Okay.
So the piece that you're reading there that says minus, that's only referencing the HRA piece that's going directly to them.
Okay. Clear as mud.
Sorry.
Yeah, I think, yeah, that's fine.
So as they increase the PEMCA and the CPI, that's less that we're paying?
Not necessarily, because the premium goes up and our 50% total goes up at the same time usually.
That may even be muddier.
Sorry.
Glad you understand this stuff.
All right, I'm good with that.
Okay, so let's go ahead and then I'll entertain a motion for item B of the consent agenda.
No motion.
I'll second.
Okay. Motion by Councilwoman Olivera, second by Councilperson Matilde. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Passes five oh. Okay, item numbers, item letter C. From what I understand, what we're trying to do here is we received, in negotiating, again, a tight budget, in negotiating with the visitors bureau, we give them in excess of like $140,000 a year or more through our TOT tax. And so we went to them and said, you know what, guys, we're paying more than the county does. We're paying a lion's share of the visitors bureau. We'd like to negotiate some kind of reduction. So we negotiated a $25,000 reduction. And now what I'm seeing is that because they gave us this $25,000, not only do we not raise the rent that we were going to, we talked about raising the rent on the visitors bureau, but we held that, we do the $25,000, held that even. And now we're also being asked to fund the ACBA budget in its entirety when during the original budget process, we did not fund it and we didn't fund a lot of people's budgets in its entirety. So not seeing the ACBA budget, not being able to parse where the money's going, I don't feel, you know, that's responsible to-
She can explain further, but just also CVB is giving us $20,000 in kind marketing and advertising besides the $25,000 where we are going to keep from, retain.
Well, that's why I wanted to see the ACBA budget, because I believe about $5,000 or so was marketing. And that can be used with the in-kind. And we're also providing some other in-kind stuff. So I want to see where the budget is before I would approve, and again, this is just me, but before I would approve for $11,500.
Okay, I think, I think when we began negotiations with both ACBA and CVB, we were at first just trying to get CVB to incorporate pieces that ACBA needed for, specifically for the Mark Twain Wild West Fest, directly from the CVB budget and not be part of it. What then happened was we had our budget hearings and I believe ACBA was acting in that regard at that point in time and did not come and request the extra money that they needed for the Mark Twain Wild West Fest this year. The negotiations then with CVB came back that they wanted, no, they wanted to give us the money back, not take on the Mark Twain Wild, Mark Twain Fest. Let me shorten it. Directly because then that was going to give signals to other events that maybe they would have to give money to them as well. So they came back and said, no, we'll give you money back. That's where we got into, okay, we want the $25,000. I believe right now, we're sitting with Mark Twain Fest about to go down. They need the funds. I don't think management's standing against, I would say, Mary and I are both recommending that we use it out of this first draw. I think we've been communicating with you that way throughout the whole time that we would make them whole for this Mark Twain Fest so that they can get it done. Now time is of the essence, so if you kind of balk at this, Mark Twain Fest is actually going to go down without us being able to give them any money. So that's kind of the position. That's kind of the history of the negotiations. I think that ACBA would have been here, and I can probably let Debbie or somebody speak if I'm not speaking well enough for them, would have been here to request this again earlier, but this all got pushed because of the CVB negotiations.
My, my question was, I understood that, but I wasn't aware that we were going to be doing the same amount as last year. And so I guess, kind of with what Scott, it's not that it's not supporting. I think it just was very unclear about what that dollar amount was going to be out of the $25,000. And so I think it would have been helpful to understand that because I know that in the previous years, I've had, I know I've had issues with the, with how that was allocated with the Wild West. Because there were some line items in there that just were out, they were flat out outrageous.
Well, I'm not saying that you guys would disagree with some, would or would not disagree with some of the line items. I believe that ACBA's request was very clear that they were waiting for the $11,600 and those were all given to you during the budget session, that that's what they were thinking was coming from CVB. And I do believe that we have communicated with you that $11,000 of it approximately would go out of the 25 this year in informal sessions with no decision-making. So I'm sorry if that wasn't clear, but I think as far as ACBA's concerned, it was already, already $11,600. We just had the shift in negotiations and we're just kind of recommending at this stage of the game that we go ahead and give it to them in good faith to get this Mark Twain Fest going this year because we've kind of backed it up to this level. And, you know, from there, we'll go from there into next year and have it more proven out.
Scott, I wanted to say, oh, go ahead. I mean, I do apologize because I thought we had, as I said earlier, I thought we had discussed this at budget hearings, not in closed session, was that part of this would go to them because that's what ACBA was expecting. They weren't, did not bring us any budget except in lieu or in fee kind or whatever we call that because they expected to get this from ACBA, from CVB. And so they instead sat back and we said, well, yeah, we will get it funded for you.
Had they, had they made the request of 11-5 to us at the time, we wouldn't have, we probably would not have given them that because at the time, budget's tight. We didn't give Destination Angels Camp what they wanted. You know, we cut, we cut a lot of people's requests down because of the budget. So now this is kind of coming back door and the optics, I don't think, are proper because now it would be that we're totally funding ACBA when we didn't fund other people.
And I guess I'm confused because I thought we did discuss this in budget.
Could I mention something? No, my, in my memory, yes. My understanding from when we had the budget talks, that there were two different $11,000 numbers. One was in kind, but the other was for this amount to come out this first time, one year. Next year, we double check it again out of the money that we're getting back from CVB. So that's, so I don't think anything has been done. I think maybe the confusion was that there's $11,000, one was in kind and this one, and I think maybe it didn't register.
The fact that there's confusion at all, we're talking about allocating funds that we, you know, question we have or don't have, is the problem. So I guess one question I would have is how much of this 11-5 was, was marketing money? And that could have been, you know, that could have been part of the $20,000 that we negotiated with the visitors bureau already. negotiated with the visitors bureau already. So, are we double-dipping?
No. Uh, this, the CVB is giving us two separate things. They've given us twenty-five thousand dollars that we will not give them, so we will retain twenty-five thousand dollars. And then, they will give us twenty thousand dollars in-kind for marketing and advertising. So, it has nothing to do with this year, this twenty-five thousand. They will have additional twenty-five.
Right, so any marketing or advertising would come out of that twenty, not out of the twenty-five in cash.
Correct.
So...
And CVB is doing some of that. Uh, if you look at their website, they put Mark Twain Fest as one of the highlights of their items, and have done it in other places. That's coming out of the twenty thousand. But the direct support, based on our negotiations, they didn't want any direct support to come from, from them to an event, other than what they normally do in their, uh, marketing for events.
I guess where I'm having trouble is, I thought it was gonna go to more than just Wild West Fest. I was under the impression that this money wasn't just, just for this event, that it was gonna help with multiple ACBA event for tour, related to tourism throughout the year, to help fund them as well as the in-kind. So, I'm just kind of taken back that it's just only going to the fest.
It's not only going to the fest.
And not, I, it, I understand it has to go toward tourism activities.
Well, this fourteen thousand dollars is not going to the fest.
But, you know, are we gonna be expecting when it comes to Christmas? Are we gonna be expecting all these other tourism activities in town to be coming back for more money? And I just wanna make sure that if we're gonna do this, that the money's being well-spent for all those activities, not just, just all of us focus on one.
As I know it, ACBA will not coming back, be coming back to us, or in, any of this money will be used for ACBA's Christmas parade, anything like that. They have their own budget for it. And the only thing we said we would pay was for this Mark Twain. Uh, we have additional fourteen thousand dollars that we can, we will be coming to you at some point to say, can we give it to, uh, whatever it is, if they're an event for the museum or something like that. But, yes, normally, when we give ACBA budget money, they decide where it goes. In this one, I think we just went with the flow at the time they were talking, they needed this, and we just put this here and, and said, okay, they need this money for that. And so, so they, it won't be divided up in between their events. Does that make sense?
Yeah, no, it is, it just...
But they will not be coming back for more money. I mean, it's...
My mind, it just wasn't always all going to just that. I thought we were helping throughout the year with various tourism guests.
We will be, but not for them. The rest of the money, the fourteen thousand we have remaining, will go to other tourism things that you guys pick, and it won't, you know, it's not like ACBA's gonna come, if they do, I hope not, but if they came to us and said, we need money for the Christmas, that would be up to you guys to do it. Or you can say that museum's putting on some event, and we want to do it. So, it will go to other tourism things, if there's any kind of things.
And my, my only concern in this is, I thought there were about five thousand dollars of this budget was advertising and marketing, and I don't think we need to pay for that, because I think that should've been done through the visitors bureau. Either with the twenty agreement, the agreement they're gonna advertise for us, or already done. So, that, that five thousand, if that's the number, I might know what the number is, I don't think we need to pay that.
One, one way or another, it's pretty late. They've probably done a lot of that advertising, number one.
Can I hear from somebody with that question?
I can let Debbie, Debbie can...
Debbie or Duane or, yeah.
So, thank you. First, I want to clarify that, um, I am a co-chair of the Mark Twain Wild West Fest, and I do this as a volunteer, so I'm not associated with a paid person for either ACBA or DAC. So, with that being said, we have, um, thirty members who serve on our steering committee, and we put together our budget. Our budget is about sixty thousand dollars to put on this event. Um, about ten or so is related to marketing promotion, another ten or so is related to infrastructure, um, about fifteen to twenty is related to the entertainment aspect, and other expenses related to what I call administration, whether it be our insurance, or road closure fees, or whatever it might be. So, we raised that money to pay for the event. When we were approached about, um, seeking sponsorships, we, uh, put together a budget that included all of these things, and there was a meeting back in May, April, May, in regards to what the city, CVB, about looking at the monies that we need and the sponsorships we're asking for. So, the number eleven five was proposed, and basically, it covers, you might say, you know, a portion of the event. I mean, it, whether it's advertising, whether it's paying for the entertainment, whether it's paying for bathrooms, road closure, whatever it is. So, with that, the other part of where we raise it from is from our raffle and from sponsors. So, we seek out about twenty thousand dollars in various sponsorships, and we have about eight thousand dollars in what we call in-kind, meaning that, you know, they donated the bathrooms or whatever it might be. And then, we have raised money from our raffles. So, the goal of what we do is raising money, enough money from the raffle to be our seed money for the next year. So, this ask of the visitor's center was made back in May, and then budget sessions came up. ACBA did submit a budget that was very clear, in my opinion, about these are all the events, this is Mark Twain Wild West Fest, and these are the monies of, of our budget in regards to that. It wasn't on the table at the time because of negotiations of the, as a visitor's center. And we were asked to not pursue it because of the discussions and all sorts of other things going on with the visitor's center at the time. So, part of ACBA's presentation at the time was looking at all of ACBA events, everything from taste to the Christmas parade, to the sidewalk sales, to, uh, everything ACBA does. And no money was being asked, and that's where they asked for the in-kind services from the city to help pay for. Every time we put a banner up, it costs X amount of dollars, and road closures or whatever it might be. So, those were in-kind dollars that ACBA requested. A few of those dollars were related to the Mark Twain Fest, because we do hang a banner across the road. You know, waiver of a fee or reduction of a fee for use of the park, et cetera. So, this eleven five or eleven six ask of the visitor's center was separate, not part of the city budget at the time, but it was in all the budgets that ACBA has presented to the city. And so, that money is being counted on in regards of a sponsor to the event, and able to help produce the event, whether it goes for, you know, there was lots of discussions about visitor's center and in-kind services, and that's part of what's happening now in regards to the Facebook advertising and the promotion on the page and this kind of thing. The hard dollars we need are true hard dollars, so we can go buy an ad in the enterprise, go buy an ad on a radio station, public radio, whatever. We need hard cash to pay for these kinds of items. We are using every avenue we can to seek out in-kind sponsorships and support for other kinds of things.
And those exact items are part of what else we, the other thing we negotiated with the visitor bureau is that they spent twenty thousand dollars on stuff just like that. So, that ask for those, for the hard dollars to go back and do those ads is still something I think needs to go back to the visitor bureau and come out of that twenty. We have two buckets, and I'd like to see it come out of that twenty thousand.
And some of it is. They, there have been, in fact, I think Councilmember Herman showed us last month, a article in LA, that was in LA newspaper regarding Mark Twain Wild West Fest, which was put in there by the visitor's bureau. So, they are contributing, it's just in addition to what they're, they are doing, that the visitor's bureau is doing that in-kind service also.
They have contacts and resources above and beyond what our committee can do. And that's where the visitor's center is being helpful. And whether that's part of the in-kind, that wasn't part of the discussions back in May. We weren't aware of a twenty thousand dollar in addition to the hard cash of being in-kind in any way. But at the same time, you know, it's not, this is one event of many, many events that need to be promoted, and to utilize those monies for the visitor's center to do so. I mean, there are many, many events for Angels Camp to be promoting, not just this one. So, the, the, what they're doing for us now is very much appreciated, very helpful, but it's really the hard cash that we're looking for, because we have, we have bills. We have entertainment bills, we have staging bills, we have sound bills for the system, we have insurance bills. You know, I have to put up traffic signals to close the road. It's thirty-six hundred dollars to put up the traffic things that we need to do. That's, that's a hard dollar cost, and that's already giving us a ten to fifteen percent discount. So, those, we just have a lot of hard costs to produce this event. This event drew five thousand visitors last year to the event. We were able to do aerial views and do a people count for a day-long event. We looked at our hotels and motels, they were eight, ninety-eight percent filled on this weekend. We had, you know, additional traffic to us based on this event. Um, you know, I can't recall the Facebook hits and the webpage hits that we saw for this particular event. So, it is Angels' biggest event, you might say, compared to all other events that happen in town.
Any comments?
Well, as I say, you know, going back on my memory, that is how I remembered, was the two different sums, but I can see where it could've gotten confusing, because at first I didn't, and then I, I focused in on it, and I went, oh, wait, this is a separate amount. And then, no one's, you know, we all kind of went along with the budget and everything, and I think that, yeah, we did agree to that.
Yeah. And again, my, my concern is, I don't wanna pay for more marketing when it's already, in my mind, been agreed to, that the visitor bureau would kick that in.
Yeah. But they won't, I, I don't know the agreement, and I don't know the behind-the-scenes discussions, but, you know, it's been the visitor's bureau's policy that they don't pay for a specific ad, say like the, in the enterprise or radio station. It's a very broad-based marketing campaign that they use.
In that, when, in our discussions with the visitor bureau, like, radio ads is one of the things we brought up specifically. So, that's where there's some miscommunication.
And I think one of the things is, like, like Debbie said, the Wild West Fest has been in the making the last year, in fact, from last year. They had already put a lot of this stuff in motion. So, what the visitor's center is doing now is in addition to that, they did not know that, how much the visitor's center was, they didn't, like she said, she didn't know that it was gonna be twenty thousand in-kind. So, they already put that in motion for marketing certain things, and the visitor's center is helping with that also. So, so there's no way they could take that kind of marketing back. I mean, perhaps next year, whenever they do it, it'll be a whole different story, but as of this year, like she said, the, the hard money is needed, and I don't know.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Any more discussion?
Yeah.
So, I'll entertain a motion to approve item C.
Move. Second.
Motion by Vice Mayor Follendorf, seconded by Councilperson Herman. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Passes five oh.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, uh, we are now on to our regular agenda, of which there are no items this evening, so we'll go straight to...
And I would like to just point out that we did have a workshop set up with CCWD who did, were not able to make it. So, that is why it was sort of like canceled, so.
Okay.
We, we scheduled that at some point. It's up to them to reschedule now with us, so.
Okay.
Okay. So, we'll move on to calendar. Susan?
Okay, tomorrow at five-thirty, um, there is a COGS meeting, and Monday is a holiday, so city offices will be closed for Columbus Day. The Planning Commission meets here at six o'clock on Thursday, the twelfth. And just a reminder that the LAFCO meeting that would've been on the sixteenth is canceled. And we have, on the seventeenth, we've scheduled a, at four o'clock, a city council planning commission workshop on priorities, and then six o'clock city council meeting here.
Um, I had a question about that. On the planning commission workshop with the firehouse, John Benoit of the LAFCO had said something about wanting, if you wanted him to come to a meeting, I don't know if this is the meeting.
This is, this is a different meeting. This is, um, priorities, the planning commission.
Okay, so it's not about any...
Brought to us. It's, it's just at the firehouse, not about the firehouse.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Uh, we have a, uh, highway four corridor meeting October fifth, but I don't have a time. I don't, it was, it's...
Hmm. I think four o'clock. I'm gonna have to, I'm gonna have to...
It wasn't printed, that's why, I just was wondering.
Yeah, it had a hard time finding a home. They didn't know where to put it for this meeting, so I think it's set up at four o'clock up at Murphy's Sanitary District. I'll confirm that now, and send it off to Mary.
Okay.
Okay. With that, I will adjourn. Chair, buddy.